Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
Liang?
Yes.
Oh?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Superintendent DPW?
Yes.
And Municipal Clerk?
Okay, please join me in wishing Councilwoman Consavo a happy birthday today. Please rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of every United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
I'd like to ask everyone to join us in a moment of silence for Sergeant Etienne Ashati. He was a member of this Police Department, retired, big time, 2011. He was a great guy and anybody that knew him really loved him. So if you could just sort of join us in a moment of silence for Sergeant Ashati. Thank you.
Today was the funeral for Sergeant Ashati down in Texas. I know some of our current and retired officers went down and I provided the family with a proclamation and I'll read it into the record right now. Whereas Sergeant Etienne, Etienne Ashati grew up in Englewood Cliffs and enjoyed sports, especially the New York Giants and the New Jersey Devils. And whereas Sergeant Etienne was sworn in as a patrolman in the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in 1988, and whereas Sergeant Ashati was promoted to sergeant in 2004 and is remembered fondly as an individual who fostered an environment of camaraderie and high morale. And whereas Sergeant Ashati's service record to the borough was impeccable and he maintained the professional image on which the Police Department prides itself. And whereas Sergeant Ashati was extremely popular among the ranks during his tenure and retired from the borough in 2012 after 20 years of service, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs are very appreciative and will always remember Sergeant Ashati for his 20 years of outstanding and meritorious service to the residents of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Thank you. And I'd also like to have a moment of silence for a resident who passed away two weeks ago, Ms. Rose Provada. Okay, next up on our agenda are the minutes of the caucus and regular meeting of November 10th, 2016. If all council members have reviewed those, I'd like a motion to accept them and approve them. All in favor? Thank you. Our correspondence this evening is a letter from the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. And I'd like to now turn to our finance chairman, Councilwoman Mark Park, to review the claims for the period November 11th, 2016 to December 14th, 2016.
Yes, all the council finance chair members leave all the checks and we move to pay them all, no question about it, this month.
Okay, I'd like to have a second to the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll have a roll call for that. Thank you.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
Liang?
Yes.
Oh?
It's me.
McMorro? Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Something I should have done earlier, I see council-elect Ellen Park is present here tonight and is William Wu. I'd like for you to join us at the table right here. It's your transition up to the dais, so if you want, just feel free to come up here and sit with us.
I'm not really dressed for it today. I apologize.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Sit there, okay. There's no official work for you to do, so. Okay, have all the council members reviewed the department head reports that were submitted? Yes, so can I have a motion to accept them?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to open the meeting up to the public, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to ask for members of the public to come up to the microphone, state your name and home address. Everybody will have three minutes to speak, whatever's on your mind, and the Borough Clerk will keep the time. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard?
I do. Hmm? I will take less than three minutes. As you know, I'm Chris Nidenberg, 115 Gregory Avenue, St. New Jersey, but I had a very vested interest in caring about covering this community for the four years that I was here, okay? Now, it is clear to me that on September 12th, 2016, I was terminated by the Northern Valley Press after Councilwoman McMorro's attorney, Anthony Bocchi, called to complain about an inequity and I admit it was my fault in an article about Mrs. McMorro's husband. Now, I just want to say that I do feel that given all of my efforts here, for the four years that I was here, I deserved better, okay? And I don't even know who above the editor decided to terminate me, but I don't even know who the publisher is. I never knew, never met him, but if anybody, Mrs. McMorro's attorney, Mr. or Mrs. McMorro, had any discussions with these people, and I was kept in the dark for three weeks, okay? And, you know, I was first told that I could survive, you know, that everything would be fine, and then all of a sudden, on October 30th, after waiting, and I lost two weeks' day, and I lost almost $200 for stories I didn't get paid for, I was told that I was fired. So, Mrs. McMorro, I apologize for the error that I made, okay? I tried very hard for the four years that I was here to give your party and your side the best possible coverage, and I feel I deserve better. I feel that it could have been resolved, it looked like it was going to be resolved in a much more amicable way, but your attorney, Mr. Bocchi, seemed to hold as hostage here for like three weeks negotiating some kind of retraction. And you got your retraction, but a lot of the retraction was false, because I never said in the article on the motion with Mr. Tracy, I never said that he attacked Mr. Tracy because of the sexual orientation. I said that he didn't, okay? So I should have gotten, and I will finish up here, and then you could have been fired and you don't have to respond, and I thank you for letting me speak, but I feel that I should have gotten a better deal from you. I feel that it could have been resolved in a much more amicable way, knowing that you constantly were clawing me for the prior three years, and you know you did. You wanted me everywhere, every time. I worked my heart out to do the best for this town, and I deserved better than what I got. But I will go on and I will prevail, believe me. I may be down for a moment, but I'm not out, because fortunately I am riding somewhere else, I'm not going to mention the people who I think have a lot more power and clout than the Northern Valley Press. So that's why I want to say, thank you, Mayor, okay, and thank you for listening to me, okay? I appreciate it.
Just before we continue, there's, we have to keep the front door there clear of any obstacles, including tripods, so can you move that in or out or out of the doorway? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Dave DeGlorio, 165 Charlotte Place. I just heard Chris speak and it really is shocking that something like this would happen. It's really disgusting that someone would use and bully a person. It shows the type of character of this person. Is this character miserable? Is this character of this person disgusting to take a person of the press and intimidate them? I think it's horrible. It speaks for itself. The hard work that Chris put in had made an honest mistake, and I think it's disgusting. That person should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Mike Cotton over 11 Fifth Street, January of this year, I was at, I think, my first council meeting in a long time, asked about the developments. I live on a unpaved road. Was told by this mayor and council that you guys were starting to take action, look into it. I see there's something happening tonight, but I'm still not aware of anything, so can you give me some sort of an update on what's going on with the street?
I'll let the Borough Council address that, please. Thank you.
Well, a settlement has been reached. I can't release the actual details until it's signed by both sides, but a settlement has been reached whereby certain funds are going to be placed into an Espro account that will go towards repairing all of Fifth Street.
So there is a repair?
There is a plan in progress, yes.
Any ETA on, I mean, you're signing a settlement tonight, but is this going to happen in the year of 2017?
The repairs?
Yes.
I don't know about the repairs.
Okay, so nothing, nothing further beyond this settlement tonight than I have to come back?
We've taken positive steps to move forward, to get everything taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street. First of all, I want to chastise each of the members of the council. This is the third meeting at which the mayor has limited public input to three minutes, suspending Robert's rules of order, and I'm embarrassed for all of you that none of you have spoken out and allowed the public to speak without that restriction. My comments are very simple. First of all, at the last meeting, you tried to pass a bill that would have allowed $295,000 to be spent this, next year for an emergency appropriation. I asked for the supporting documentation for this and was unable to get it. I also asked for all of the emails that related to this request, and I did receive those. Mr. Mayor, when you, when you proposed the budget for adoption in March, at the end of March, you said, quote, unquote, that there was a $362,000 tax liability, tax refund liability for 2015 that had to be paid for in 2016. I've taken care of it. Those were your words on tape. Well, much to my surprise, actually not to my surprise, it seems you didn't take care of it. You did just what you criticized your predecessor of doing. You've made an emergency appropriation after the budget was adopted, not including those funds, and are pushing the expenses into next year. So I want to know how you took care of it by diluting the residents and diluting everybody in town about the great tax savings that you put forward when you knew at that time that you had 362,000, actually 295 at this point, of bills that had to be paid for tax settlements and didn't fund it when you knew they were there. You're not going to?
The nature, no, the nature of public portion is you get to say whatever you want and you don't get to ask me questions unless I want you to.
I understand.
Right now, I don't want you to.
Okay, so we're going to go?
Because you know what? We did this all year, so keep going. You have 33 seconds left.
33 seconds? Does anybody yield time to me?
No yielding.
Thank you.
There's no yielding.
No yielding? Is the council authorizing no yielding, suspending Robert's rules?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to have an audience yield their time to Ms. Geiger. Let's take a vote.
What's the motion?
Motion to have another resident yield their time to Ms. Geiger to speak more.
If it's limited to one. Limited to one resident.
Limited to one other.
To wait. Have a motion pending, except the notion?
As long as it's limited to one resident being permitted to yield their time.
That's, that's not what Robert Rule says, and that's not what she said.
But she's a lawyer. Is that right? What is the legal opinion on that? You can only yield one, one resident?
You can, you can limit the time of speakers, you can limit the time of speakers by limiting the number of residents who can yield, who can provide their time.
But it's the council that does that, not the mayor.
I'm not saying that.
It's the council.
I actually brought a Bible too, if you want to swear to what you're saying from here on. That hasn't been done very much, so.
Well, Councilwoman O's motion is on the table.
Okay, you cannot speak out of turn, sir.
I'd like to clarify my motion. I'd like to have a motion to have a resident yield their time to another resident so that they could speak more than three minutes, and I, I don't want any limitations as to how many people that, you know, we, we have to limit.
Some of the ones, a speaker, because it may not be a resident.
Yes, another speaker yielding time to another speaker without any limitations as to how many?
Well, I would oppose that, that motion, but.
You can, we, do a second.
I make a motion for discussion for a minute. I can, I don't need a microphone. I make a motion for discussion.
I think there's a motion that was decided, so we have to take a roll call.
Okay, we're not going to speak out of turn, okay? You've all done that, we're being very tolerant. Ms. Geiger's option, we've already spent more than six minutes trying to deal with this issue.
I don't care how much money you spend, I'm here.
Okay, let's have a vote. I recommend a no vote, but you guys vote.
Hold on, hold, yeah, let me, let me, let me try to clear my mind before I vote something.
I just asked to do that, but I was.
Right, right.
Can you just repeat?
Do you want me to repeat a few? Yeah, okay. There is a motion from Councilwoman O for a, a person from the public to yield their time to the current speaker. That being said, the current speaker has three minutes and the person yielding would yield their three minutes totaling for six minutes to speak, correct? Now, what you want?
Without limitation. Without limitation. It could be more than one speaker yielding their time.
So 50, so I want to understand what we're voting on. So 50 people yielded, and then how do we know which 50 people yielded it, and then how do we keep track of how many minutes?
Shouldn't be that hard to track.
Ms. Geiger, let me ask you a question. How much more time do you need?
I don't know. I haven't practiced my questions ahead of time.
Okay, good. So let's have a vote. Again, I recommend a no vote, but you guys vote, be guided by what you decide.
So what is our legal side of the position? Is common practice, this is just a one-off?
Other municipalities limit the time that their speakers can speak. Other municipalities permit yielding. Other speakers do, other municipalities do not limit. It's up to the municipality, it's up to the governing body. This, this governing body is making a statement right now, so there's, there's a motion.
Okay, let's have a vote. Roll call.
Councilperson Zaverta for, okay. Liang?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Park?
No.
Consavo?
No.
Okay, we have four yeses, Mayor.
Okay, so is that?
I just would like to make a comment. I'm asking this to be reasonable. I'm asking this to be reasonable. I never had any intention of not being reasonable. I wanted to be able to ask and request.
Then I have another question. Technical wise, how can we calculate the time, accumulate the time? So just sort of.
From the legal bills, I noticed, from the legal bills submitted by Dorsey and Semirah for last month, actually for the month ending October 31st, I noticed that about $1,000 had been incurred in legal fees dealing with trying to decide whether the Oprah request submitted by the Bergen Record to the, to the mayor and to the borough should be fulfilled. $1,000 for the Bergen Record. I have asked for, on November 11th, I asked for all memos relating to that and was told, and I referenced the specific bill you had on, and I was told that my request was too broad. So a week later, I submitted another request which itemized in eight specific parts all of the documents that I requested relating to the Bergen Record request. I was told this afternoon, I got a response that said pursuant to your request, your records will be read in an email to you on Friday, December 23rd. The information requested needs to be reviewed by our borough attorney who is on vacation. Well, number one, Oprah, as I understand it, requires that the response be done within seven business days. That's not seven business days to notify me and then tell me that I'm going to get it two weeks later. Number two, Dawn, it appears that you're here, so obviously you're not on vacation. So I want to know why this borough is not releasing information that is public, because information from the Bergen Record requesting documents is not privileged, and neither is the response from our attorney to the Bergen Record about those documents.
Thank you.
I guess no response again. Okay, we're moving right along.
What in the minutes?
What?
In the minutes, we have not.
It's been two minutes and 30 seconds. Okay, so Lanza and Lanza bill. I got another copy, the first copy was not redacted, the second one was, and the items that were redacted were Ms. McMorro's and Mr. Cranjack's names from the bills, which are very strange, because those are not privileged. If a member of the mayor and council meets with an attorney, the fact that they met with them has no privilege. And I want to know why Lanza and Lanza, according to their own resolution, is supposed to be signing the contract, and as of close of business yesterday, I was told, there was no contract yet. When is this contract going to be signed so we in the public can see the terms of their retention? I guess once again, no answer. What else is new? Mura, you have a Mura suit on your agenda for executive session. I assume that that suit is independent of the action that is pending now for six months. I'd like to know when this mayor and council is going to deal with Judge Geda's recommendations on Mura. No answer again? Okay, we keep moving. Internal affairs. The Lanza and Lanza bill that was submitted, the one in which Ms. McMorro and Mr. Cranjack were mentioned, includes various items totaling almost $8,000 in billing relating to internal affairs investigations. Anyone who knows anything about internal affairs in the Police Department or internal affairs anyplace knows that those affairs are restricted to the Police Department. So I want to know on what authority the attorney and Carol, whose husband at the time was still a member of the Police Department, are dealing with internal affairs of the Police Department. I've got to respond as I did the last time, Ms. Geiger, because you asked this question once before, and I, I understand politically you just want to get up there and continually try and make me look bad, but I'm going to respond the same way that I did to you the last time. I did not meet with Mr. Lanza and discuss anything about internal affairs. This is the second time I'm telling you. I discussed Moore Road. I'm not going to tell you that again. Okay? Miss, Miss McMorro, that's fine, but the bills that they submitted for that month have absolutely nothing on Moore Road. Every item on that bill has to do with internal affairs of the Police Department. Yes, it do, I have, do I have to pull out the bill? No, it was not. And perhaps you should pull out the bill, because I have it in my clothes, I don't have it with me. Yes, it does, it says internal affairs. Excuse me, may I get the bill? Or would you like to pull it out yourselves?
You've now been over eight minutes.
Have no fear. It really doesn't matter, because you're not going to answer it, and don't put words in my mouth, Carol, because you're wrong. No, I'm not wrong. Yes, you are. No, I am not wrong.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, Ms. Eastwood.
Somebody changed that mail, that's a problem.
Lauren Eastwood, 4 Willow Drive. On the resolution for closed session this evening, we have attorney-client privilege Fifth Street settlement. Earlier this year, Councilwoman O recused on Fifth Street because she had a conflict. Councilwoman O, could you explain to me why you were in closed session tonight?
She recused herself from that discussion.
I wasn't there.
No, she did, that's fine, she did recuse herself. Is there anybody else? Okay, yes.
Ellen Park, 116 Pershing Road. I just have a question regarding the agendas, because I, I know they're, they go online. I was wondering if, you know, is there a deadline, like is it supposed to be on Monday? We meet on Wednesday or Tuesday?
Friday. Supposed to be Friday.
Is that, is it supposed to be on Friday? Okay.
So we had, we had a few pending matters that we are negotiating right up to the wire, and that's why it was all delayed this time.
Okay, but normally it's supposed to be on a Friday before?
There's no rule, but we try to get it out by Friday.
Okay. Um, I actually had a different question. I don't know if I can ask it, so I'll just.
Do you need to consult somebody?
Yeah, give me one second.
Okay. Do you want to call Joe Perisic too? All right. Thank you. All right, good. Anybody else? Yes.
Hello, Maria Lari, 45 Jane Drive. You know, I sit here, I've been sitting here now, meeting after meeting, and I have to tell you, I, I am speechless with what's going on in this place. I just want to remind everyone sitting back here that while the previous mayor, Joe Perisic, was sitting up there, it was a three-minute, and Mr. Zaverta kept the time, and he had a quacking clock that let us know that our time was up, and I don't ever remember berating the mayor the way these people do to you guys, week after week, and I am insulted and ashamed of some of the people that live in this town, and they should think about what they're doing. They laugh at residents that come up here.
They're talking right now.
Of course they're talking, because they have no respect for anybody.
Seriously, just stop talking. You can do that? It's not circum second grade. Just stop talking, let the woman speak.
Respectfully?
No.
Why not?
We did.
I've never seen, I've never seen this coming from anybody else with that, and I'm disgusted with it. And I'm sorry that you guys have to put up with it, and I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, I'd like to say, if you really want to be relevant in this town, really want to be relevant, do good things for the town, okay?
Yay.
Be productive.
Hey, man. Maria, I was always in favor of time constraints, we'll call it, and I still am, but we've always allowed yielding of time from other people, so.
We never had that in.
We never said, we never said you could not yield time to other people.
No, we didn't.
We never said that. So that's, I'm all in favor of time constraints, you know, I really am, I think you hear like many people. Because I believe we should allow to yield people, yield time.
Okay, well, let's be productive here. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay, I don't see anyone. Have a motion to close the public portion. Thank you.
Mayor? We're closed. I'd just like to make a comment. Okay, to Mr. Nyidamburg and to Mr. De Gregorio, and to the public. To Mr. Nyidamburg and to Mr. De Gregorio. You know, Mr. Nyidamburg, I'm very sorry what happened to you. Mr. Bachi, when he contacted, your editor contacted on behalf of his client, which was the former deputy chief. What happened to you was the decision of your editor and whoever else was working with him. You have been provided emails showing that we had nothing to do with what happened to you. You know you've received them, and they exist. So I'm sorry that you feel this way, and you're continually emailing me, all my friends, people in town, and they're defamatory, and they are defamatory statements about, yes, about myself and about the mayor. Okay. Mr. De Gregorio, just because someone gets up and says something does not make it factual.
Just for the record, folks, I don't care what you say about me. I'm doing the right thing at all times. I'm working hard for this borough. You say whatever you want, hell at the moon, I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing, and you'll get tired of doing what you're doing, okay? And then, then join me. Be productive, okay? Come on.
For the record, Mr. Nyidamburg's statements are all false.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, next items on the agenda are the resolutions, 2016 for consent agenda. I think we're adding one.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen and State of New Jersey authorizing the dismissal of all charges as to Officer Scott Mura. Whereas, six certain charges were issued in 2015 as to Officer Scott Mura, and whereas, following an appeal of these charges, a hearing was conducted. Whereas, the mayor and council were apprised as to the record of appeal and relevant information, and now therefore be it resolved, that the mayor and borough council have reviewed and discussed the matter, all pertinent facts and information, and have decided to dismiss, to dismissal of all charges as to Officer Scott Mura.
Thank you. Can I have consent agenda read, Madam Clerk?
Can I have the floor?
I don't know what the order is.
We're voting.
It's the consent agenda.
What's that?
I said it's the consent agenda.
It's the consent agenda, so can you just read through them?
What do we call the new?
It's 162. It's 162.
Right. Yes, 162, no, no.
Resolutions on for consent agenda. 155, authorize adoption of personnel manual. 156, authorization to hire winter basketball coordinator for 2017. 157, transfer plenary license 0216-33003-007, person to person, place to place. 158, authorization to transfer budget appropriations. 159, emergency appropriation of tax appeals. 160, approved designation of an acting municipal court administrator. 161, authorized execution of Fifth Street Settlement. And we added 162, resolution of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen and State of New Jersey authorizing the dismissal of all charges as to Officer Scott Mura. Motion?
A motion.
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
156, yes. 157, yes. 158, yes. 159, no. 160, yes. 161, recuse. 162, no. I'm sorry, 161 is Fifth Street, correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, abstain now.
So let me repeat it. And 162?
162, no.
Okay. So on all the resolutions, I'm just going to read the ones that are not a yes. 159, no. 162, no. And 161, abstain.
Correct.
Okay. Councilperson Liang?
Yes, to all.
O?
Yes to 155, 156, 157, 158. No to 159. Yes to 160. Recuse on 161. And no to 162.
How is O? Okay, McMorris?
Yes to 155, yes to 156, yes to 157, yes to 158. No to 159. Yes to 160. Recuse on 161. And no to 162.
How is O? Okay, McMorris?
Yes to 155. Yes to 156. Yes to 157. Yes to 158. Yes to 159. Yes to 160. Yes to 161. Abstain on 162.
Okay. Park?
Yes, to all.
Consavo?
Yes, to all.
Yeah, break down?
Yes.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two is three minutes.
Three minutes. Two. An abstention is a non-vote.
It's a non-vote.
So as to 162, I vote yes.
You don't need to vote. Abstention is a non-vote.
All right, so we're good. Yeah, so they all pass.
The tax appeals pass.
Yes, everything passed.
Mayor, one. Mayor, we need to do the ordinances, and I will need a public hearing date, so if we can get that first.
Okay.
Right. So we have, we have two ordinances that are being introduced by title only. The mayor and council has to determine a date for a special meeting. Special meeting has to be seven days after publication, and the earliest we could do it is December 27th, and the latest we could do it is December 31st. So we need a consensus as to when everyone is available, please, for the adoption of the two ordinances that will be introduced tonight.
The 29th or the 30th work for me. I don't have my calendar. But we have to decide it today.
How about Thursday, the 29th, at 10:30 a.m.?
Which is the 30th?
29th.
29th is the 30th. It's the Thursday.
The Thursday.
The Thursday. 29th, what time? 10:30, what time?
10.
10:30 tomorrow?
Yeah, I have an afternoon.
Is the governing body available on Thursday, December 29th, at 10:30 for the public hearings?
Yeah, I'll take 10:30. I'm sorry, I'm taking 10:30. 10:30 is a little more. It takes better. But if I have a noon, how about 1:00?
I have a 1:00 myself.
Let's do noon.
Is everyone available at noon? Is everyone available at noon? Yes?
No one's meeting.
I actually work from here.
You never know.
Is it Friday?
No, it's Friday. Can we do, and can we do 11:30 or?
At the middle of the day like that, I'm not in the muddle, you know, it's not going to help me, so.
Can we do first thing in the morning?
Yeah, first thing in the morning might work.
8:00? 8:00.
I can't get here. I would be sitting in traffic for two hours.
I can just schedule it when you need to schedule it, up to my best event.
All right, so let's keep it at 10:30.
We have four that can. Is that fine?
Yes.
We'll never get it scheduled.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone.
So.
On the 29th?
Jose, you'll send that out just?
Yeah. All right. So the first ordinance, introduction by title with a public hearing on December 29th, 10:30. Will the meeting be here or at Borough Hall?
Here.
At 10 Con Terrace. Ordinance 11, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs, Section 2-13, entitled, Police Department to Add Section 2-13.8, entitled Hiring Policies and Procedures. We need a motion in a second?
Second. Can we have a discussion? Let's just introduction by title. Can we discuss?
If we don't get any other questions, we'll discuss it. We might not make that kind of a discussion.
We usually, usually do the discussion at the time of the open, of the public hearing?
We'll do it on the 29th.
Okay.
The public will have comment, and we can comment as well.
So not today?
Not today.
Is what you're saying?
That's what we're saying.
Ordinarily, when you're introduced by title, there is no discussion.
Ordinarily.
That doesn't mean that you can't.
Well, that would be up to.
I think it's more efficient if we do it on the 29th, with everybody having to say anything, comment.
I'll take a real call. Councilperson Aversa?
No.
Liang?
Yes.
I'm sorry. O?
No. Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
Pass, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now, the second one is ordinance number 12, with a public hearing on December 29th at 10:30 a.m., 10 Con Terrace. 12, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-18, Borough Administrator, Subsection 2-18.4, General Duties. We need a motion in a second, please?
Motion?
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
No.
Liang?
Yes.
O?
No.
McMorris?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Passes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Let's do the committee reports next, and.
If I may, can I have a word? Do you think a motion to advertise for a full-time recreation director?
Go ahead, second it, thank you.
Full-time, full-time.
Okay.
Who seconded it?
I don't know.
Okay, councilperson Aversa? Liang?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. So the next part of our agenda is usually the most exciting part, is the committee reports. But today is special, actually, because this is the December meeting, it's the last regular meeting for two of our council people, Ziliang and Nazio Consavo. I want to thank them for their service to the borough. I hope everybody else gets thanked as well. It's been wonderful working with them both, and so we're, we're actually teeing this up for real good committee reports from both of you. So, Councilman Aversa, please state your committee and your report.
Lighting, so far so good. Just like to thank Councilman Liang and Councilman Consavo for giving their time for the past three years. Wish you luck. Have a good time in Mexico. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you.
I have transportation, nothing to report this month. I'd like to also thank Councilman Liang and Councilman Consavo. Thank you for your time. I know it could be very tough and, you know, taking a lot of time away from your family, and sometimes it could be a thankless job, so thank you very much for your time on council, and it was nice working with you both.
Thank you, it was very nice. Councilman Liang, did you have a report?
Well, it's my last report. After three years, so quick. I still remember 2013, 2014, when my son was little, we come over here, now the bigger boy. DPW, wonderful. Thanks again.
Thank you, Councilman.
Wonderful work.
Thank you. The leaves are all gone. Thank you. Councilwoman McMorris?
Okay. Quick question, we were going to discuss this during caucus. I'm just going to do the 5K right now. The 5K committee met after the November meeting, and there were many, it was a great meeting. We had a lot of recommendations, a lot of recommendations to improve on the event, which was really a successful event. We all know that, everybody had a lot of fun, and we're already planning for 2017. So what I wanted to ask the council, I had planned on asking this during caucus, there were two dates, the 5K committee preferred if we could find a date in September, even though it did work in October, the weather, the wind was really bad that day, one of the blocks was suffering from it a little bit, so we were hoping we could find a date in September. They gave me a tentative date to ask the council as their first choice, if everyone could just take a look at their calendar and let me know what their thought is. It's September 17th. If I, council members, if you could, the ones that are here not looking, please, what? I just need directions so I can go back and report back to the committee. Anything wrong with that date?
Don't carry my calendar with me, I'm sorry.
Why don't I find out?
All right, so if there is an issue with it, if you could let the clerk know, and then, because we need to start.
Training.
No, no, but we need to start that already, and what the committee wants to do is, this year, we invested in one start-finish line, and because of our success and the money that we did raise, which is in a trust account at this point, we would like to buy a second one, so that we now, we don't own them both, and we don't have to rent and throw that money away. So we just want to get that date confirmed. Presently, working with Paul for basketball, and as you saw, I made a recommendation for a full-time recreation director. This year has been a great year, working on recreation and community events. The successes, and successes by everyone working together.